My name is Paul Martinez. I'm one of the owners here. I started working in restaurants at a young age. But during that time, that's when a smaller restaurant around the corner came up for sale. And my dad had mentioned to me, hey, instead of you work for somebody else, why don't we open your own restaurant? We opened it up in April 28th, 1982.
So we started in about a 40-seat cafe, basically is what it was. We grew over the years to this particular side of the building back in 1989. 2002, we built this room right over here. And then in 2012, we built Benito's Cantina. So we have a seating capacity right now of about 280 guests. We've always said that you can go out to eat anywhere. You can go to the grocery store and buy food. But when you come to El Hardin, you come here for the experience. Where we're at, we're kind of a destination establishment for being in business so long. So we love the idea that people drive 20, 30, 45 minutes to get here on a weekly basis. My brother runs the back of the house. My sister runs the front of the house. And we all live in Commerce City. So it's more of the mom-and-pop operation with the family touch. Currently, we have a staff of 82 employees. Thirty-nine of them are full-time employees. We're nothing without them. They're the ones that contribute the most to our business and our success. So the fact that we can employ 82 people is something that we're most proud of.
Back in the days where we used to run two cooks and one grill cook, now I run nine cooks back there on the weekend, plus myself.
Working with the city has been phenomenal. Without their help, we would not have been able to grow like we did. And our last expansion back in 2012, one of the biggest issues that we had was parking issues. And we were able to work with the city to create a parking space that worked well within the Derby community, as well with our restaurant, too.
They took the time, taught us what we needed to know. Because before, it was always my dad taking care of that.
So that partnership pays dividends 10 times over for us. We've done a lot of great things within the restaurant and the community. But when we got the call that says we were the Business of the Year, it's probably one of our proudest moments, to be honest, and we really appreciate it.
It's a good feeling to know that, that they recognize us. This is home to us. And for the city to recognize us, it's pretty gratifying.
This is probably dairy because it's Stephanie.
No.
No.
Stephanie got her. No, no one else has a second sodder straw. Now I have one. I don't have one. Your performance evaluation reflects.
Are we gonna have the screen go up?
Not till after we're done.
Oh, okay. Hello, everybody. Good evening. Thank you very much for your patience. We'll go ahead and get started here. It's an organizational meeting, so it's not a study session or a regular meeting. So it's gonna be a little different. This is a hybrid meeting of the City Council, member of public and beautists, meeting live on Channel 8 and the city's website and YouTube. It's 6 o'clock and now calls meeting order. And up, this wasn't on there, but I asked to add it on. Public comments, all public comments will occur now. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes each. Will the clerk call any virtual or in-person speakers?
Mayor, we don't have anybody virtually, but our first in-person speaker is Deborah Bullock. Deborah, if you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes to speak.
You gotta mute.
Oh.
There you go. You're on.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm here tonight to congratulate the newly elected representatives, Lori Young, Stephanie Trujillo, Jose Wardiola, and Joanna Sandoval. I look forward to watching them take care of our city, and I look forward to engaging and working with all of them. I also want to thank Sean Ford and Oscar Madera for your service to our community. Before 2019, the city really got some great things accomplished because the council worked for Commerce City and did not have personal agendas. And both of you were on council during that time. Since 2019, the majority on this city council has stalled growth, caused political discord in the community, pushed their personal agendas, and blocked progress. There has been zero meaningful economic development in this city, which affects everyone. In 2014 to 2019, there were five major projects, one every year. And Sean and Oscar were here. And in November 2019, the progress stopped. This economic development could have continued to this day. We need leaders who will prioritize public safety, expand economic opportunities, support local businesses, small, medium, and large, work with organizations such as the Chamber, the Historical Society, the Water Department, the Fire Department, the school districts, Rotary, Adelante, and more. We need council members who show up and represent our community. This current council has dismantled the boards and commissions to put your own people on them to support your agendas. And you did not appoint anyone with any history in the city or with any longevity or any knowledge of the city. This community needs to be equally represented. And when all the council members live north of 96th Avenue, with the exception of Ward 1 and Ward 2, it is not equal. Maybe it's time to have a charter amendment change and have two people in every ward. And forget this at large. The city is divided. Many northern residents call the South the ghetto and don't even know what exists south of 96th Avenue. We have two different shopping districts, two different school districts, two different recreation centers, and no downtown that everyone can go to. This is nothing but division at its best. The city has almost had 100% employee turnover within the last six years because you have micromanaged the city to death. We have lost many employees with institutional knowledge that none of you have, except for Sean, Oscar, and Rocky. Cities around us are reaping the benefits from this dysfunctional city council, and they are loving it, and our city is losing out. So I'm happy that most of you are now going to be gone. And the next election, the rest of the majority members will be gone, too. There is a powerhouse election team working right now on identifying the right candidates for the next election in 2027, just like they did in 2025.
Thank you. Could you please wrap up?
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Reba Drotar. Reba, come on up. You'll have three minutes.
I grew up next to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, went to the schools here, was a mayor pro tem, a successful business owner. I volunteer every week here. I have family here. I wrote the petition for the 917 acres that this building sits on and for the establishment of the refuge. I wrestled with this terrible issue for quite a while. I had overwhelming grief and outrage, so I decided to wait until it was time. This is the time. December 7th, just a couple of days ago, was the 84th anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor, which changed the course of the world in Commerce City. And then came Vietnam. Gerald Gray, Gary Large, William Markle, William Mendenhall, Peter Miller, Stanley Miller, Alan Munson, Wesley Shimoda, Lloyd Williams, Jerry Winslow, Commerce City's own, and my cousins Raymond Weber and Freddie Tolu all died in Vietnam. And those, World War I, World War II, the Korean Conflict, and others. Do you know the name of Frank Nakagawa? He was the founder of the Memorial Day Parade. I was his helper. Like me, some on this council were outraged by the selfish actions of a council member who brazenly, with her own group, donned shirts with anti-Israel slogans on them. She used the Commerce City float in the sacred Memorial Day Parade for her own purpose and gratification. A despicable, disgraceful exhibition. Did it escape her that the parade was gratefully to honor our righteous fallen heroes? Or that the junior ROTC were marching in that parade and might someday be in combat and never come home? Or that the parade ceremony ends exactly at the Veterans Memorial? Or that each council member is only one part of the whole governing body? Or that there are Jews working, living, and volunteering in this city? It was hideous discrimination. I heard these actions were deemed free speech. Pure nonsense. Free speech, yes, but not under the guise and pretense that you are representing a city. Do it on your time, your dime. This usurped any council authority. No council or staff would authorize such action. It trampled on the graves of fallen warriors. I am mindful of the Pearl Harbor survivors, six of them, struggling, old, marching proudly, holding their flags, honoring those lost. Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, the Parade of Lights, the Rose Bowl Parade. If a rogue council person had commandeered any of those city floats for their own purpose, especially for the purpose that has been declared an international terrorist organization and which denigrates the entire Jewish people, would have been pulled off and arrested. People remembered and voted. To this council, to this new council, I beseech you to learn about this parade, its history, and its connection to the internationally recognized Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge and make policy so that nothing like this ever happens again. City Council 101 is to strive to make a safe city and to represent the city with cohesion and dignity. I see city council and other I see city council and other leaders in this city bash this city. Good grief. Everyone must do better.
Thank you, Ms. Drotar.
I just want to say there is a plaque on dedication to this building. It's right outside in the lobby. I wrote it, and here's what it says. Because of their patriotism, courage, and perseverance, and love of this land, this site is dedicated to the people of Commerce City, past, present, and future. I hope that is your new mantra, new city council people.
Our next speaker is Chris Van Dyck. Come on up. You'll have three minutes.
That was, that was close. It's Van Dyke. But that's okay. No, everybody gets it wrong. It's the silent J that screws everybody up. Hi, my name is Chris Van Dyke. I am a longtime resident firefighter with South Adams County Fire Department, and I'm also currently one of the people running for House District 32, right here. I have the privilege of living on the north side and working on the south side. So as Ms. Bullock said, it's a unique place, and I like to think that I am fortunate that I get to experience both. I just wanted to come up this evening and say to the outgoing members of council, thank you. This is thankless, I'm learning, this is thankless, long hours to try to make people's lives just a little bit better. And I think all of you have worked really hard in certain aspects of like really, really digging into equity and human dignity and trying to make the environment here just a little bit better, trying to grow in a smart way. To the members who are coming to council this evening, we are really intrigued because some of you have experience in land use policy or education. Some of you are some of the best at building advocacy coalitions and partnerships. So we are watching, but we are also very hopeful, and we are excited to see sort of where we can go next. That's all I've got. On a personal note, I just want to say to all the outgoing members and all the folks who are coming on, thank you for the conversations, the council, and the advice that you've been giving me as I've been on this journey. To quote Councilwoman Noble, do what's right even if you lose. So that's what I'm trying to do, but I appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Renee Bullock. Renee, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On behalf of the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, my name is Renee Bullock, and I'm the executive director. And first of all, I would like to thank the board members that are going off, Oscar, Sean, for your work that you've done. As a past councilman for 14 years, I know what you have gone through. For the, Sean, it'll be 20 years when he goes off to council as of this year. 20 years. Mayor and city councilman, as institutional knowledge that I hope that the new council will lean on to find out. Oscar, I was on the housing with Oscar. I was on council with Oscar. I've seen Oscar work. Thank you for all you do, and I know that you went through a war. So thank you again. For the rest of council, thank you for everything that you all do, because I know that it hasn't been easy at all times, but it's going to get better. I can guarantee this smile on my face is not fake. I am happy for what is about to happen here tonight. So as executive director of the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank you all for the work that you do, and I especially want to thank Oscar and Sean for the work that they've done for the city of Commerce City. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all. Okay, thank you. Okay. Members, members of the plug were able to submit written comments online by mail. Written comments were not received by the deadline. If a follow-up is necessary, you should expect to be contacted by a staff member. Okay, we go to council members goodbye. We'll start with, Councilmember Teter, do you like to say any goodbyes?
I'm not going nowhere.
No, no, this is, this is you, this is you saying goodbye to the council member that's outgoing.
No, I'd, I'd just like to thank Oscar and councilmember Ford for their years and years of service, and I agree, it's, it's a challenge, but it's rewarding. You gotta look back at all your accomplishments, and you have made a number of accomplishments over the years, I know. And I for one, and the city appreciates it. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kim?
So I never really got, I've always played, you know, not played, but I always, you know, appreciated both, both of what everyone had to say, even before I was appointed on council. Funny enough, Sean and I, you know, we never saw eye to eye, but you know what? And I called him out on it a few times, but back and forth. By the end of the day, we ended up having, hashing it out, chatting about it, and honestly, I don't mind, I like Sean. A lot of institutional, lots of institutional knowledge, for sure, that is, that is being gone. Appreciate the, what is it, 200-plus years of service you had for city council, Sean, and Oscar, your past eight years, thank you very much. At the end of the day, you know, what, what I look forward to is finding a balanced approach to ensure that we can move the city forward altogether. So looking forward to the new council as well. But again, thank you, thank you to you two who are leaving. That's all.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with, with Oscar. Oscar, thank you. Your presence, your desire for the city, your willingness to come back and actually support and be a part of the solution. It is a model for a lot of us as residents in Commerce City, what could be, what could be possible. Little, I don't know, I don't know if everyone knows, that Oscar has a degree from CU Boulder and from Notre Dame, and has chosen to come back to the city. Literally, he could work anywhere, and he could be anywhere, but has chosen to come back and serve the city for eight years. I've been on two years, and I can see how eight years is eternity, right? It's a long time, through COVID, through recession, through a number of challenges, ups and downs, and you've been here as a presence. The other thing I appreciate about you, Oscar, is your attention to detail. I've learned so much in my two years around what it looks like when we look at budgets, when we look at audits, when we think about our community improvement projects and what that looks like. And the last is just your advocacy. Since I've been on council, I've heard you advocate a number of times for Colorado Boulevard to be finished. I've heard you advocate for making sure we have more speeding or more police presence in especially part of your neighborhood and across the city as a whole. And I heard you advocate for the idea of how do we have a golf clubhouse that is something that all our residents can participate in and have an asset for our city. So your advocacy, your, your presence, and your attention to detail is something I'm gonna miss. So thank you for your, thank you for your time here. Sean, you have been an amazing beacon for the city for 22-plus years. Not only were you a mayor, a councilmember, but you were also a city employee. And when I think about your role as a city employee, I think that really drives your decision, your desire to be here and make it better for residents. I hope to take that with me, as I have been truly fortunate, as we're gonna witness here later on, is that we don't know where we're gonna sit at the beginning of when we get inducted into, or you get appointed, or whatever, when we get here on council. And so I got this opportunity to sit next to Sean for two years and just listen, understand how he votes, understand his presence, but most importantly, understand the history of Commerce City, whether it's the Shake Shack, or thinking about A&amp;W, or thinking about Old Adam City High School, as you guys were drag raised probably back in the day. But your presence, your desire, your, your heart and your kindness is something that I, I hope people take away and understand how powerful that is. The last piece is just your, your humor. There is times where, it shouldn't be funny, but, but you take a humility and a humor that helps me and has helped me over the last couple of years, understand a perspective that this is about the people of Commerce City. This is about finding joy in what we do, and this is an opportunity for us to help improve the city. And again, you have modeled that throughout your time here and my ability to serve with you here, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Col Tim Noble?
Thank you very much, Mayor Douglas. Thank you, Mayor, very much, Mayor Douglas. I want to thank everyone who has served on this city council. Your service is very, very much appreciated. Kristy Douglas isn't here with us tonight, but I always called her our social worker. Her compassion knew no bounds for people in Commerce City. A huge heart, and also so, so interested in environmental justice, as was councilmember Renee Chacon, who had so much life experience that she was bringing to the table and sharing with us in a way that I don't know anyone else could replicate. I will hope to be able to live up to their best qualities and the things that they brought to the table for Commerce City. We are a hugely diversified community, and it's important for us to acknowledge that and to accept everyone in Commerce City. I want to thank Sean Ford, yes, he is a fountain of history, and he will be missed for that. I'd also like to thank Oscar Madera for his service. I want to also mention that one of the speakers referred to what our council makeup is, and in the last go-round, I'd hoped that we could have two councilmembers per district, but it wasn't a winning argument, and perhaps it will be this time, because of the nine councilmembers, eight will be living north of 88th, and six will reside in Ward Four alone. That's out of nine. I think that for all, everyone here, our city motto, quality community for a lifetime, has been the foundation of every decision. And of course, we all have different views of what that means. They reflect our constituents, and some of our constituencies are different than others. And I'd also like to point out, earlier this evening, we were all getting our pictures taken for this next year, and I really want to welcome all of the new councilmembers as well. And we were upstairs, and I noticed an article pinned to the wall that I hadn't ever seen before, and it was about five projects in five years. And that period was from 2014 to 2019. That was a commitment by the city to do one project per year for that 1% sales tax that we all pay that was approved by the voters of Commerce City. So like the speaker, absolutely, it is impossible to run as an incumbent if you don't have projects that have been accomplished. So rest assured, everyone on this council has wanted to see projects completed, projects started, projects completed. I'm excited for the next two years, and that will complete my service to Commerce City. It has been a joy, and I know it has been the same for councilmember Ford, councilmember Madera, councilmember Douglas, and councilmember Chacon. Let's all thank all of them, and let's all try to get this new year on a great start and have the holiday spirit as we go through the rest of this evening. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I appreciate the councilmembers that are leaving. Their service to the, to this community, it's, it's a lot. It takes a lot. Every Monday, it's not just the Mondays, it's the days in between, the service. We had a very diverse city council. Councilmember Chacon, being the first indigenous councilmember, I appreciate what she brought to the table. You know, we're not all gonna get along. We, we all, we all work under different aspects of the city. We want to make sure our city grows, and we, we want to make sure everyone is included. And I felt that no one had, to me, no one as council had an agenda. You come in here and you work for the people every Monday. We've sometimes have had the same residents come here every Monday because they feel like they haven't been heard. So for those who are, like I said, who are not here, and councilmember Douglas, for someone who is really a grassroots advocate, cares about the community, she spends most, most of her time, she's spending in the southern part of Commerce City, helping people out. Over the weekend, she was, she just called up a resident about homelessness that's in our city, the way trash and all that's being, being put out and everything. So things can look a little different when you're not in this position, and I can say, councilmember Douglas, got to see that side of what it's like to be a councilmember. Councilmember Ford, I served as councilmember Ford for eight years, from 2011 to 2019. I learned a lot when Sean was the mayor, and his last two years as a councilmember. He's brought a lot to the table, and yes, institutional knowledge has been great. Yes, we did have five years, five projects in five years, but now we gotta pay those projects back. That costs money. It's easy to spend money, but you also gotta make sure you have money to go forward. So everything that's been built, we also have capital improvement, operation, and maintenance to make sure those structures stay as they are, and when they start to, don't look so, look so hot, we gotta make sure we take care of them. So that is an investment. We have several investments that are, that have been approved, that are in the pipeline, and you'll see those shortly. Councilmember Madera, I got to serve as councilmember Madera for, for, for two years. It's last, my last two years before I got off council, 2019. I served with him as a city councilmember, and, and we've had plenty of conversations, and there's a lot of times we didn't agree, disagree on everything. But when we leave this council, it's, it stays here as well. So I, I do appreciate you serving your eight years. I've come back as mayor, and I've, I've learned a lot. And we've had plenty of discussions, and, and I listen and, and learn from you as well. And you, you do stick to, to, to detail, especially around the budgeting type, asking great questions, making sure that we are doing what we're supposed to do. And so I just, I really, I really appreciate the speakers that came forward and, and spoke. The public comment was not part of the agenda. I decided to add that in, so people can have that, their freedom to speak. So I do, I do appreciate the folks that came up, came forward. All right, now we'll ask any leaving councilmembers, goodbyes, and party remarks, to start with councilmember Madera.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was gonna thank everyone like they do in the Oscars, but inevitably, I'll forget to mention some people, so, you know, apologies in advance. The city clerk's gonna hit me with the buzzer one last time, you know, me going overtime. So first of all, I'd like to thank the community that entrusted me with representing them over the past two terms. It's been the greatest honor to, to serve the community. It's been the greatest honor to, to serve the community that I grew up in. You know, as most people know, that read the council corner, I moved here on my eighth birthday and now I've got to serve the community for, for eight years, so it's come full circle for me. And, you know, just over the, the last eight years, we've accomplished so much, right? We have new rec centers, remodeled rec centers, new parks, remodeled parks, the Mount High Greyhound parks, not a giant parking lot anymore. And we finally got sidewalks on Colorado Boulevard. And that's only just a few, you know, there's so much to come and I'm so excited for the new council coming in and everything that they are going to accomplish over their terms. You know, hopefully that we left them with enough things started where they can ride their coattails like I rode the coattails of the councils before me. Thank you to all my friends and family and everyone who's supported me along the way. As all councilmember elects contests out there, it takes a village to campaign, knock on doors and get your name out there. So it's a lot of work and your, your friends and family, they, they sacrifice alongside you. You know, there, there's a lot of milestones that come and go over the years, graduations and weddings and all these things just fly by, so, you know, don't, don't take it for granted and cherish every moment that you have. I want to thank our wonderful city staff. Without them, nothing gets done, right? There's no rec center, there's no funding, there's no roads or sidewalks. So, we have, you know, the, the best city staff and it's, be remiss if I didn't thank them. You know, they're, they're the heart and soul of the city. They keep the city safe, work overnight, plow on the roads and, you know, do so much more. So, I just hope that I was able to be an advocate for, for everyone on staff and, you know, that I was able to convey over the years how much I appreciate each and every one of you. Want to thank everyone that I served with on council. There's a lot of councils that I served with over the eight years. Too many to, to name. To Councilmember Ford, I, you know, can't say enough good things about him. We've, haven't always seen eye to eye, but we always had mutual respect and, you know, I knew that I could count on him and, and pick his brain and, and get the, the history of the city like no one else could, could tell. So if we ever start a Commerce City Hall of Fame, Councilmember Ford's sure to be in For the new council members, congratulations on being elected. And thank you for, for taking the commitment to our community. It's not easy and it's often thankless, you know, but I am confident that you will leave a lasting impact. You're gonna get some mean tweets and emails along the way, but, you know, just know that this is why we elected you, to make those hard decisions. You're never gonna have all the information at the time of making the decision. You're never gonna be able to please everyone. You know, if you build a new rec center, the pool's not gonna be big enough. You build a new park, there's not enough pickleball courts. So, don't let perfection stop you from being great. When opportunity presents itself, seize it and be decisive. Control what you can control and follow your heart. At the end of the day, your only agenda should be to leave the city a better place than you found it. And hopefully I was able to do that during my terms.
Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I have a little bit to say tonight. First, I want to thank the residents for allowing me the opportunity. Second, city staff. I want to name a couple that have become really close friends of mine. Jason, thank you. If it wasn't for the staff, the city wouldn't operate. We don't operate the city. Most people get that confused. We set policy. Jason and the employees are the ones who make the city work. So when someone comes in here and yells at us about there was no cop on 68th Avenue, Jason has to talk to them, has to have answers. Most of the time, he's already talked to them before they come in here and complain. So, I think you're a great city manager, keep doing what you're doing. I want to say something. If somebody pokes you in the chest and tells you what to do, unless it's the nine council members that are seated up here, break that finger off. All right. Congratulations to the new council. Joanna, Stephanie, Jose and Lori. I'm extremely optimistic about the future of Commerce City. Development, I want to talk a little bit about development because we have had a lack of development and it's very frustrating. I have heard things like developers are evil, they're, they're taking advantage of the residents and it frustrates me. Reunion is a great, a great community. The people that live there love where they live. They chose to live there. If it wasn't for those developers to build these subdivisions where you live, you wouldn't have that place to live. So, developers own the land and we control the process. Pretty important that you have a relationship with the developers. Pretty important that you try to work together to bring to this community what our residents If you're not in a competitive advantage with fees and time for permits and things of that nature, you're at a disadvantage. Someone told me a long time ago, if you're not growing, you're dying. You gotta get the fees down in this city. You, you have to start working with the developers if you want to succeed. If you want to get the things in this community that your residents want, you're gonna have to incentivize those things. You can't call up every development, send it back to planning commission and think that the professionals that we hire, that Jason hires, the, the engineers, the people that know these things better than we all do, and you try to second guess them and you cost the developers time. Time is money, but they own the land. So you need to work with them and try to work together to get what the residents need. These guys, a lot of them, some of them in the, in the audience tonight, they're up there in their seventies and eighties. They land bank it. Their, their kids will land bank it. They'll develop it when they have the right environment to develop it. You all need to create the right environment. When it comes to city facilities, we have a couple coming online. Thank God, we have a new police substation coming. That substation is going to help give an opportunity to have seats for cops, desks for cops. We're 50 cops short right now. We need that. I'm glad the council chose to do that. We have the golf course remodel coming on. It's important that with, with those type of facilities, that the council sets timelines on those, on, on that construction, to get those updates. You got this amount of time, Jason, have it built. If you don't set those timelines, don't hold it against staff for not having it done. That's our job. Oil and gas. It's okay to make sure that oil and gas is clean and safe. I grew up in this community from 1966 until today, literally until today. Conoco was here. Conoco was the first thing that was annexed to this city when Commerce City became a city. Because you needed the revenue to fund the city, to be able to provide the services. I was here in high school when it blew up. I'm still here. It is way cleaner and more efficient than it ever has been. And I'm all for it to be clean and safe for our community. However, doesn't matter, it'll get regulated until it goes away. And that's some people's desire and that's okay. Everybody has a choice, everybody has an opinion. However, think twice before you run them off. Because with them and their subsidy, subsidiary businesses is 50% of the revenue of this city. You know what happens if Suncor goes away? Taxes go up. What happens if taxes go up? Nobody wants to develop here. It's a very, very big balancing act. Hold them accountable. Sit down and be their partner. Talk to them about how can I help you help me? Be careful about not inviting them into this room. You know, it's okay if you don't like oil and gas. Life is about choices. If you don't like oil and gas, you don't like landfills, you don't like the arsenal, you don't like the water, don't live here. I'm just telling you, it's the wrong place for you if those are the things you don't like. There are a lot of people that grew up here, still live here. I went through a process with the arsenal cleanup. The arsenal was a great thing for this community one day. We were helping a war effort. It's turned into a beautiful refuge, but the fights that I saw go on and on and on. Mustard gas, everybody's gonna die. You know what? I love Commerce City. if you don't like it, leave. Thank you to the council that I worked with. I want you all to be successful. Thank you to the new council coming on. I'll be watching. And thank you to my family. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Appreciate what you had to say. I want to ask the outgoing city council members to collect their belongings and vacate their seats at the dais. The audience can give, give a hand to the outgoing council, please. All right, now it's swearing in time for the new council members. We'll now swear in the newly elected council members and when I call your name, please come up to the microphone in front of the dais. Please bring any loved ones with you as well and we'd like for you to be in support of you being sworn in. So I'm gonna say aye and then just state your name, okay?
All right.
Can you repeat after I say, okay? All right, raise your right hand. Aye.
Jose Guardiola.
Swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the constitution.
Support the constitution.
And the laws of United States.
The laws of the United States.
The constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado.
Excuse me? The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the home rule charter and ordinance of Commerce City.
And the home rule charter and ordinance of Commerce City.
Oh, you can look in there too. I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
I will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office.
Of, of council member of the city of Commerce City.
Of council member of the city of Commerce City.
Of Colorado.
Of Colorado.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Up next is Joanna. Can you repeat after I say, okay? All right, raise your right hand. Aye.
Jose Guardiola.
Swear or affirm?
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
Support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
The laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado?
Excuse me? The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the Home Rule Charter and Ordinance of Commerce City?
And the Home Rule Charter and Ordinance of Commerce City.
Oh, you can look in there too. I will faithfully perform the duties of the office?
I will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office?
Of council member of the city of Commerce City?
Of council member of the city of Commerce City.
Of Colorado.
Of Colorado.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, up next. Up next is Joanna Sandoval. And if anybody from Joanne's family would like to be up here. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
This is gonna be the author you're gonna say. So I'm gonna say aye and then you state your name. And then I'm gonna, I'm going to read it and then you repeat what I say, okay? If you want, you can use that as... All right. Joanna Sandoval. Okay. All right. Aye.
Joanna Sandoval.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
Affirm that I will support?
Do swear or affirm that I will support?
The Constitution and the laws of the United States?
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Oh, sorry, you need to raise your right hand. Sorry about that. All right, let's start over. Aye.
Aye. Joanna Sandoval.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
The laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution, the laws of Colorado?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the Home Rule Charter?
And the Home Rule Char, Home Rule Charter.
The Ordinance of Commerce City?
And Ordinances of Commerce City.
I will faithfully perform the duties?
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of Commerce, of, sorry, of the office of council member?
Of the office of council member.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you sure can, yes. Okay, up next is Stephanie Trahill. If Stephanie's family or friends who came here would like to come up to support her? Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right, Stephanie, Stephanie Trahill. Okay. Aye, raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Stephanie Trahill. Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the Home Rule Charter?
And the Home Rule Charter.
And the Ordinance of Commerce City?
And the Ordinance of Commerce City.
I will faithfully perform the duties?
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member?
I will faithfully perform the duties of office of council member.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Last one. Lori Young. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I am so happy for that big print.
Okay, Lori Young, raise your right hand. Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Lori Young.
Aye, Lori Young.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the Home Rule Charter?
And the Home Rule Charter.
And the Ordinance of Commerce City?
And the Ordinances of Commerce City.
I will faithfully perform the duties?
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of the council member.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Is everyone content with their seat at the dais? Historically, the left side looks, looking from the audience of the dais, has the ward council members seated in order from Ward 1 to Ward 4. The right side of the dais has the at-large council members seated in order from the most tender to the least. The mayor pro, the mayor pro tem, I'm sorry, the mayor and the, sorry, the mayor pro tem sits to the right of the mayor, the right-hand side, and the seats are adjusted accordingly. So up next is the appointment of the mayor pro tem. I had some thoughts about this. So I select my mayor pro tem to serve the next organization, until, until the next organizational meeting of the city council. My choice is, if she will have, is Susan Noble. So Susan, is that something you would like to do for the next two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
It's been an honor. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We all have taken our, taken our seats. I will now ask the clerk to take a roll, roll call vote with the new council.
Mayor Douglas?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Present.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Present.
Councilmember Teeter?
Present.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Present.
Councilmember Kim?
There!
Councilmember Dukes?
Present.
Councilmember Trahillo?
Present.
Councilmember Young?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, up next is reception. It's a half hour for the reception. It's seven o'clock. So everyone be back by 7:30 in the, so the council needs to be back in 30 minutes so we could take our group photo. So, onto recess. Thank you. All right. Up next. Lori Young. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I am so happy for that big print.
Okay, Lori Young, raise your right hand. Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Lori Young.
Aye, Lori Young.
Do you swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States?
And the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado?
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the Home Rule Charter?
And the Home Rule Charter.
And the Ordinance of Commerce City?
And the Ordinances of Commerce City.
I will faithfully perform the duties?
I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of the council member.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Of the city of Commerce City, Colorado.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Is everyone content with their seat at the dais? Historically, the left side looks, looking from the audience of the dais, has the ward council members seated in order from Ward 1 to Ward 4. The right side of the dais has the at-large council members seated in order from the most tender to the least. The mayor pro, the mayor pro tem, I'm sorry, the mayor and the, sorry, the mayor pro tem sits to the right of the mayor, the right-hand side, and the seats are adjusted accordingly. So up next is the appointment of the mayor pro tem. I had some thoughts about this. So I select my mayor pro tem to serve the next organization, until, until the next organizational meeting of the city council. My choice is, if she will have, is Susan Noble. So Susan, is that something you would like to do for the next two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
It's been an honor. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We all have taken our, taken our seats. I will now ask the clerk to take a roll, roll call vote with the new council.
Mayor Douglas?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Present.
Councilmember Guardiola?
Present.
Councilmember Teeter?
Present.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Present.
Councilmember Kim?
There!
Councilmember Dukes?
Present.
Councilmember Trahill?
Present.
Councilmember Young?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, up next is reception. It's a half hour for the reception. It's seven o'clock. So everyone be back by 7:30 in the, so the council needs to be back in 30 minutes so we could take our group photo. So, onto recess. Thank you.
All right. So everybody's back. Okay, now it's, uh, we're at the point, appointment to boards, commissions, and committees. We'll now appoint council members to serve on boards, commissions, and committees. The city clerk provided a spreadsheet with our review ahead of the meeting. As we go down the list, please use your request or speak button to volunteer to serve on the board, commission, or committee. City Attorney Zarzaki?
Yes, sir. Is there something on here for myself? I don't see anything on the script.
Let's see. I don't see it either. What's on your script?
Nothing for me.
Oh, nothing for you? Oh, okay. Okay. Just double checking. All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, I will have, if, uh, we have more than one volunteer, then there are available seats on the board, commission, or committee. I will ask the volunteers to state their reasoning for wanting to serve on that particular body. I will then ask for a motion to vote to appoint each volunteer separately in the full body. We'll determine the member that will serve. Once all available positions have been filled, the city clerk will then repeat the list to confirm appointments with the council. And then I will ask for a single motion to vote to confirm all appointments not already voted on earlier. Okay. All right, moving through the spreadsheet, um, I will ask for volunteers to determine which motion and votes are needed. Let's see. Okay, um, up first is the zoning board of adjustment. This, this, um, committee meets monthly on the second Tuesday at 5:30 here at Civic Center. It says hybrid, but really the need is to show up in person unless it's an emergency or so, or you can't make it. So is there any, anyone who would like to volunteer to be on the zoning board of adjustment? Need one member. All right, we'll, we'll skip that one and come back. Derby Review Board, one member. Any takers? Okay. All right, Councilmember Guanola.
Yeah, I'll take, uh, the Derby Review Board, um, tentatively, uh, depending on my work board meeting.
Okay, this will be the third Tuesday at 5:30.
And usually they fluctuate, so, but tentatively right now, uh, because we're in the holidays, it's going back and forth, but in January, I'll know.
Okay. Anyone else interested in that position? Okay, seeing none. Okay, we're going to, um, Jose Gualeola is going to take the Derby Review Board. So since, I don't know if we do one at a time or do all together at the end? City Attorney Zarzaki?
So what we're gonna do, Mayor, is, uh, go through the chart and to the extent that we can fill this out, and there's not too many folks that would like the same role, we'll fill the chart out. If there is, for example, in the DEI Commission, if there are a number of, say there's three members and we need to have two, then I would recommend we do a formal motion, vote for those.
Sure.
Um, and then we can go back and, and have one motion for the ones that we've filled out that were not contested.
Okay. All right. University Equity and Inclusion Commission, they meet the last Wednesday of the month at 5:30. And it's, uh, has two members on this commission. Okay, Councilmember Tuhil.
There we go. I would, uh, like to serve on the DEI Committee.
Okay, Commissioner Tuhil. All right, any other council members wishing to serve on this board? Councilmember Kim?
Yeah, I could be a backup to, uh, Councilwoman Tuhil.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Kim and Councilmember Tuhil. Okay, up next, Environmental Policy Innovation Commission, there's two members. It's the fourth Thursday of the month at 4:30. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'll volunteer for this commission.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Dukes, Councilmember Teeter?
I have conflict with other meetings the same day, so.
You want it, Councilmember Teeter?
No, I have conflicts with other meetings the same day, so I'm going to drop off.
All right. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and fill that spot. All right, Parks, Recs, and Golf Commission, two members, monthly, third Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to volunteer to be a part of the PRG.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Teeter.
Yeah, I'd like to continue on the Parks and Rec and Golf Commission.
All right. Senior Commission, two members, second Thursday at 3 o'clock. Councilmember Young?
I'd like to volunteer to be on the senior commission.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'll volunteer for this group also.
Okay. All right, Veterans Commission, two members, monthly, first Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Kim?
I'd like to continue serving on that one.
Okay. All right, this is two members. Any, any other council members would like to join? Councilmember Kim?
Sure.
It's the first Tuesday, 6:00 PM.
I guess I can do it too if nobody else wants to.
Councilmember Teeter? Okay. All right, Youth Commission, two members, twice a month, first and third Thursday at 6:30. All right. Councilmember Sandoval?
Mayor, I'm interested in serving on the Youth Commission.
All right. Councilmember Kim?
I would like to continue serving on the Youth Commission.
Okay, and Councilmember Gualeola?
Mayor, I'd like to be on this commission also.
Okay. Now I have to ask the city, the city, um, clerk or city attorney, if there's member, if there's youth commissions that, would there be a conflict for Councilmember Guanola to be on there if his brothers and sisters are on that commission?
No, I don't believe that that would be a conflict, Mayor. Thank you for asking.
Sure. Sure, all right. Okay, Councilmember Sandoval, Guanola, and Kim. So we got three ways, anyone willing to give up their position? Councilmember Kim?
That's fine, I can, I can step down from that. I think that, you know, as far as what the Youth Commission is concerned, they are doing a lot of great things. For example, they just recently did the town hall, right? They got that all set up too. There's a lot of other great work that they are doing overall. I think it'd be worth, well worth, uh, understanding and comprehending what they're doing, and kind of what they're envisioning for the future too. So they've already set up their 2026 strategic, uh, planning, so, um, definitely, it should be very well worthwhile for you guys.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kim. Councilmember Guanola?
Thank you, Councilmember Kim, I appreciate that.
All right. Okay, two members, Commerce City Cultural Council, two members, monthly, third Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Young?
Yes, I'd like to volunteer to be on the Commerce City Cultural Council.
Okay. All right, two members, who, any others members like to serve on the Commerce City Cultural Council? It's the third Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Guanola?
Guardiola.
Guardiola, sorry.
Um, if the Derby meeting collides with my board meeting, I could take this one. That's all right.
You say Derby?
Uh, because I, I have to look at my board schedule for my job.
Oh, I understand, okay.
So I'm open to taking this one if that one doesn't work out, and I'll let council know, um, the new year.
City Attorney Zarzaki?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to inform council, um, I did check with the clerk's office, and every meeting in 2025 for the Derby Review Board was canceled, so it would not be a major lift comparative to some of the other boards and commissions.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Thank you very much, um, City Attorney Zarzaki. You said every Derby Review Board meeting was canceled in?
That is in 2025, yes. I believe that they meet as needed, and I don't believe that there was one scheduled for this year that, that actually took place.
Okay, and for, uh, Councilmember Guardiola, those are both on the same Tuesday, the third Tuesday.
Uh, the Derby one's the second Tuesday, and the Culture Council, oh, you're right, I was looking at the zoning.
No, they're both the third Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with my schedule, and then I could do either one, if it works.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Housing Authority, one member and one alternate, the second Wednesday at 5:45, and they actually have a meeting, I think it's planned for this, tomorrow, or the Friday? 12? I think there's a meeting planned this week at, on Friday at 12. All right. Council, yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Thank you. What is the role of a councilmember with the Housing Authority now that it has spun off?
City Managers?
I, I can't speak to that directly, I would, I would say you could probably ask Councilmember Kim, who's been representative on that. Uh, we don't, I can't speak to that from the position of the city to the Housing Authority.
Okay, Councilmember Kim, do you, no?
Yeah, I've, uh, unfortunately not been able to attend due to other unforeseen circumstances, but however, what has occurred in the past is the fact that the councilmember is a voting member, uh, with the Housing Authority, uh, with regards to any, um, any housing needs essentially, uh, when it comes to different properties, um, that the Housing Authority owns.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Tuhil?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I would like to serve as a member on the Housing Authority.
Okay. Councilmember Young?
I'd like to serve as an alternate on the Commerce City Housing Authority.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, this is, uh, City Council Subcommittee's. The Planning Retreat Committee, three members. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'll volunteer for that.
Councilmember Dukes?
I'll volunteer as well.
Councilmember Young?
I'd like to volunteer for the Retreat Planning Committee.
Okay. All right, Council Orientation Committee. Cleared the deck here. Okay, I'd like to throw myself in, naming the hat there. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'll volunteer for that as well.
Okay, is this three members? Need third member? Councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to continue to serve on that.
Okay. All right. Next up, City Manager, City Attorney, and Municipal Court Judge Evaluation Committee. Three members. Councilmember Guanola?
I'd like to be on this committee too, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll volunteer also.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Volunteer for this.
I'll volunteer for this.
Councilmember Teeter?
I'll volunteer also.
Okay. All right, Boards and Commission, Boards Commission Committee, three members. Councilmember Kim?
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer for that, but I also wanted to throw my name in the hat for the, for the Evaluation Committee.
For the, for the judge and city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, before we continue with the Boards and Commission Committee, it's, uh, let's see, Guanola, Noble, um, Mayor Pro Tim Noble, and Councilmember Teeter. Councilmember Kim is asking to be on this. When any of you three that I just named would like to step off and allow Councilmember Kim to take a seat? Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Sure, I'll step up.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes. There was, uh, three, there was three members to the City Manager, City Attorney, Municipal Judge Evaluation, and then Councilmember Kim also wanted to be on there, so I named, named the three that put their name in the hat. Mayor Pro Tim said she'd step off. So, Councilmember Kim, Councilmember Guanola, and Councilmember Teeter. Okay, Board Commission Committee. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I have a question. Um, this says 4:30 PM, but the meetings of the Boards and Commissions had typically been on Saturdays. Has that been changed? And it wasn't monthly, it was quarterly.
That's correct, it's Saturdays quarterly, we'll make that correction on this.
Okay, so, for anyone looking at this, this is actually Saturdays, and it's quarterly. Um, I served on it for four years, and it's really fascinating because we have such, uh, special residents, and you get to interview a lot of wonderful people and hear their stories. So I would encourage anyone who's interested in giving up a Saturday four times a year to consider going on this, um, committee. It's really valuable.
And it's three members, but there's also been in the past where any councilmember can, can, um, come to this committee as well. If there's a councilmember that cannot attend out of the three, they can, they can ask to appoint someone, but you need to let the city clerk's office know 72 hours in advance if you're not gonna be able to make that interview. Okay, Councilmember Sandoval?
Mayor, I'm interested in serving on the Boards and Commissions Committee.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes?
I also like to serve on the Boards and Commission Committee.
Okay, Councilmember Guanola?
Mayor, I'd also like to serve on the Boards and Commission Committee.
Councilmember Kim?
As would I, as I've been, uh, at those quarterly deals as well, um, interviewing, being able to opportunity to interview different, uh, individuals altogether. It's been a, it's been a great, uh, it's been great, honestly, I'd like to continue that.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll step back.
You'll step back, all right. So Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I just wanted to point out one other thing is that any councilmember can attend any of these council committee meetings, even if you aren't appointed to it, and participating in the discussion. So it's not quite as formal as any of the other committees. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, gonna?
Councilmember Dukes?
Just, uh, just pointing clarification on that, uh, what we, we cleaned up is the folks who are on the committee are the ones that are gonna be able to make the, the vote and be able to move forward with the, um, board members. Although there is a number of people that showed up, it was the three that were, um, the ones that had to make the vote on that, so make sure we're clear on that.
All right, Legislative Committee, that's everybody. Policy Governance Committee, uh, to be determined, usually it's in the middle of the day. Three members. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'd like to volunteer for this again.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Young?
I'd like to volunteer for this committee.
Councilmember Tuhil?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to volunteer to be a member of the Policy, Policy and Governance Committee, please.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to volunteer to be part of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Councilmember Kim?
I step down.
Okay. So we have, uh, this is Committee Two, that, three members, but there's can be other participations by other councilmembers on discussion. I have Mayor Pro Tim Noble, Councilmember Young, Tuhil, Dukes, Kim dropped out. So, would any three, any of you four like to drop out and allow someone to stay on? Mayor Pro Tim Noble, Councilmember Young, Councilmember Tuhil, and Councilmember Dukes.
I'll step down, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that committee is Mayor Pro Tim Noble, Councilmember Tuhil, and Councilmember Dukes. That didn't sound good. All right, on to Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, one member and two alternates, bimonthly, first Monday, 2:30 to 4:00. Councilmember, um, Sandoval?
Mayor, I'm interested in being on the Adams County Regional Economic Partnership.
Okay, now this is, um, first Monday, 2:30 to 4:00. You okay with that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, that's one member, I need two alternates. Councilmember Dukes?
Sorry. Sorry, I had a question on the last one, I accidentally, uh, I wanted to step back from the last one, the Governance Committee.
Oh, you wanna step back?
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to step back if, um, Councilmember Young wants to be on it. I, um...
Okay, so you want, um, Councilmember Young, do you want to step up? Okay. All right. Okay, I got one member, plus I need two alternates for Adams County Regional Economic Partnership. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'm happy to be an alternate.
Okay. Councilmember Dukes?
Have to be an alternate as well.
All right. Okay. This, uh, Adams County Economic Committee Breakfast, it varies, let's see, it's, um, well, varies the location. It's third Friday at 7:30 AM, monthly, it's a one member. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'd like to volunteer for this, please.
Councilmember, uh, Teeter?
Uh, if we gotta volunteer, I'll, I'll step down.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes? No, okay. All right. Okay, Adams 14 Foundation, one member. Councilmember Guanola?
I'd like to volunteer for this committee.
Okay, so fourth Thursday, 11:30 in, okay? All right. Airport Coordinating Committee, I would like to remain on, remain on that board. That's all right. Councilmember Tuhil?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'd like to serve on the Airport Coordinating Committee.
Okay. Councilmember Teeter?
I'd like to remain on that board also.
All right, Councilmember Sandoval?
I'm interested on being on the Airport Coordinating Committee, however, I will step back.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Teeter and Councilmember Tuhil? Do you want to step back, or you, do you still want to go for it, Councilmember Teeter?
Uh... I guess I can step back.
Okay. All right, it's myself and Councilmember Tuhil. All right, CML Policy Committee, one member and one alternate, as needed. Um, they meet monthly while the legislation's in, in session at the Fridays at 9:00 AM, from 9:00 AM to noon. Okay, well, I'm gonna clear the deck. Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to volunteer to be a part of the CML Policy Committee.
Okay, Councilmember Kim?
I'd like to be an alternate.
Councilmember Young?
Councilmember Kim beat me to it. I'll step back.
Okay. All right, um, Commerce City, Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, one member and one alternate. Monthly, second Thursday, 5:30 to 7:30. Councilmember Teeter?
I'd like to remain on that board.
Councilmember Kim?
I will unfortunately have to step back. A Chamber of Commerce has been a great asset to our community with regards to as far as the information they have been providing, and I think it would be, it would be great if one of the, uh, the newer councilmembers, just my own opinion, actually stepped up to, uh, to be a part of that. Unfortunately for myself, the timing itself is bad now.
Okay. Councilmember Young?
Uh, I'm currently on the board, so I would like to stay on the board.
Okay, so you're, you're a councilmember, so you, this is a councilmember appointment. So I'm not sure if there's a conflict.
Well, so I have a question about that.
City Attorney Zarzaki?
Yes, so you are currently a, a member of the chamber, but not as the representative as a city councilmember, correct?
That's correct. So my question is, can there be three city councilmembers as representatives on that chamber board?
So, yeah, technically, yes, if you were, so I'm not sure what role you were in as the chamber currently.
Well, I'm the vice president, I'll be the president in 2026.
Okay, so my recommendation would be to not have you be the member as the representative of the, the city council to the chamber, because I think there's a perceived conflict of interest there.
Perfect, great, thank you.
But she can still be the alternate, right?
Councilmember Kim?
The question was whether or not she could be the alternate, I think the same, the same rationale would apply, because in the, as the alternate position, she would be representative of the city council, and then she would have two roles on, on the chamber.
Okay, Councilmember Sandoval?
Mayor, I'm interested in being on the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce.
You'd like to be on there?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Okay, up next is Dr. Cog's Special Board Directors, I'm currently on there, I would like to remain on the board. As the regular member, there is an alternate position. Councilmember Kim?
Just for clarification on the Dr. Cog board, there, there is no alternate on here, it's blocked off unless you're...
Yeah, it's supposed to be, there's, each, each, each city has a, a member and an alternate.
Okay, I would like, should then like to be the alternate on that one, please.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes?
I would like to be the regular member.
Okay. Alright, both of these are the same, uh, Dr. Cog's Special Director, Special Board of Director, it's, uh, two different things. It's the first Wednesday at 4:00. So, okay, so it's myself, Councilmember Kim, and Councilmember Dukes, but Councilmember Dukes wants to be regular member. So, it's between myself and Councilmember Dukes for the regular position. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Uh, I have been the alternate on Dr. Cog for some time, and it's my experience that folks like mayors and so forth are the regular member for Dr. Cog, because it is a council of governments, so it's representing, um, the city on these kinds of issues, I think it's, makes sense frankly, for the mayor to be the representative.
Okay, thank you. Alright, City Attorney Zarecki, is it time to take a vote?
I believe so, Mayor, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Sandoval?
Um, prior to taking a vote, I would like to ask if it's possible if both member, both individuals can state their reasoning, so that we have a better understanding what we're voting for.
Okay, alright, Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you, Mayor, I'm interested in serving on Dr. Cog because of our biggest challenges, whether it's housing, transportation, workforce, or regional growth. As we all know, these challenges don't stop with our borders, this is across the region that we need to talk about and have an opportunity to have a discussion. And over the past year and a half, I've been on council, I've been able to help modernize our economic development incentives, I've been able to help push the launch of a Small Business Task Force, I've also been able to help push the, to talk about better policies that support our residents and connect them to jobs and services. And these opportunities came from listening to the residents and looking at data and understanding how Commerce City fits into a regional landscape. I want to bring this same level of, of thoughtfulness and approach to Dr. Cog, so that Commerce City can have a stronger voice in regional decision makings. And then most importantly, I want to be able to bring this information back from what I learned from Dr. Cog, back to us as a city, so we can move forward with strategic planning.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, yes, I'd like to continue on this board, working with the counties in the different municipalities, what it is, it's, it's a metro vision plan that's already been adopted, and we do talk a lot about housing, but majority of it is, it deals with, with transportation, and I've been very successful in, in bringing several grants to the city, also, also advocating for a ten-year plan for Commerce City, which I would say advocating for positions so that we fit in, fit in that bucket. Adams County has been fostering that position, and I have challenged Adams County so that the Commerce City could actually have more of a seat at the table, and, because we are like the last frontier in this front range going, going east, and that needs to be in the forefront. That's why I like to remain on the Dr. Cog board.
Can we hear from Councilmember Kim as well, because potentially whoever doesn't win the main seat might be the alternate.
Councilmember Kim, did you want to say?
So, point of clarification here, this is for the Special Board of Directors, correct?
For both.
For both.
Go ahead. Just, as a point of clarification, I understand the logic for Mayor Pro Tem Noble around having Councilmember Kim speak, but at this point, there is no challenge that him being an alternate, therefore I don't think it needs to have him speak until there is a appropriate challenge for an alternate for this board.
Alright, so, is it a motion, I can make a motion to appoint myself to Denver Regional, Regional Council of Government, Dr. Cog, Board of Directors?
Special Board?
And, and, well, there's two of them, Dr. Cog, Special Board of Directors, Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I'll second that.
Okay. This is just a first vote, and then... Uh, City Attorney Zarecki, I'll handle this.
So, my recommendation, Mayor, would be to split both of these two, these two things up, I would do the Dr. Cog Board of Directors separate from the Special Board of Directors.
Okay.
In which case, you can make a motion...
Alright, yeah, I'll just do the...
Make a motion to approve yourself as the appointed individual on council, and then you would need a second, and then you would vote.
Okay, alright. Like to appoint myself to the Denver Regional Government, uh, Council of Government, Dr. Cog, Board of Directors. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I'll second that.
Okay, now this is the first one that meets the third Wednesday at 6:30.
Your vote is open.
Kim, you have it?
Sorry, it was like right in the middle, so... Your vote is open.
So, there's an issue, it sounds like there's an issue with...
Kim, are you able to go see Councilmember Tahil's panel that she's looking at?
How would you like to vote, Councilmember Tahil? I would like to vote no. Thank you. I would like to vote no. And we need Councilmember Kim and Tahil.
Okay, it's three and six no's, so, that fails, okay?
I didn't, uh, that's not what I voted on.
Point of clarification here, are we, we are voting for the primary position for the Dr. Cog Board of Directors, line thirty, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and this is just for the primary position, and then the next vote will go into third, line thirty-two, primary position for the Special Board of Directors?
Correct.
Because the alternate is not being contested?
That is correct, um, you could just go through the line and do the primary, and then do the alternate, and then do the primary for the Dr. Cog Special Board of Directors, you can do it either way.
Yeah.
I do want to be clear though, Councilmember Teeter, you said that that is not how you voted, which is concerning, um, so my recommendation would be to recast your vote again, which is for the primary position for line thirty, Dr. Cog Board of Directors. And the motion was to approve the mayor. Want to make sure that everyone's vote is recorded accurately.
Your vote is open.
Okay, it fails four to, four to, four to five, alright, Councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint...
Well, you're, I, I didn't win it, so you're in.
Oh.
Councilmember Dukes?
No, Mayor, uh, we still need to vote.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint myself on the Dr. Cog Board of Directors.
Councilmember Guanola? Did you want to say something?
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Your vote is open.
Okay, that passes eight to one. Alright, Councilmember Dukes, you might as well take this one too, because it's, doesn't make sense to be there four and then leave 6:30, so...
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint myself to the Dr. Cog Special Board of Directors.
Okay, there's an alternate on that too. Yeah, Councilmember Kim, you okay with that?
I'd be good with being an alternate on that one too, and for clarification, it says the first Wednesday at 4:00 p.m. is the Special Board, and then the Dr. Cog Board of Directors, the third Wednesday at 6:30.
Yep. No, Wednesday, so it's the third, yeah, third Wednesday and then the first Wednesday, yeah.
Mayor, as a technicality, for the Dr. Cog Special Board of Directors, if you are withdrawing yourself in contention, then there is no need to vote, um, if you would like to have the vote take place, then...
I'm fine.
Okay.
I withdraw the motion.
Alright, up next, E-470 Highway Authority, I'm on that board, I would like to stay on that board, as the regular member. Councilmember Teeter?
I'm also on there. I'm also on there.
You'd like to be the alternate?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to be the alternate, I've, I've been on that board for a long time also.
Okay, thank you. Any other takers? Alright, Metro Mayor's Caucus, that's myself. Okay, NOS, National, National Organization to Ensure Sound Controlled Environment, uh, this member meets in the month of March, in November, and this will be at the NLC. Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Um, I'll volunteer for that.
Okay, as an alternate or regular member?
I could, I could do it as a, as a member, it is specifically airport noise, by the way, and the new route is over reunion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Teeter?
I'll volunteer also.
Okay, would you like the regular position or alternate?
I can take regular, it don't matter.
Okay, alright. Okay, Northern Area Transportation Alliance, I'm on that one, um, have me on there as the mayor, uh, need an alternate, Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I'd like to remain on that board.
Okay. Alright, wrote, yes.
Sorry to interrupt, uh, just for clarification, for NOS, I believe I heard Councilmember Teeter say he would be the regular also, which means that there are two?
No, I think you, did you want to be regular member or alternate?
It, it don't matter, but I can be a regular member, yeah.
Okay, there is, that would make two, two folks asking to be the regular for NOS. So...
I think no, Pro Tem Noble wanted to be the alternate, didn't you?
No, he said I'd be regular.
Oh.
Would you like to, would you like to vote on that?
Uh, no, it's, I, I...
So, you're okay as an alternate?
I'm fine with it being an alternate.
Okay. You okay, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, I have Mayor Pro Tem as the regular and Councilmember Teeter as the alternate.
Okay, alright, Rotary Club International Commerce City Chapter, every Wednesday noon, at noon, every Wednesday, two members. City Attorney, I'll take you off there, Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I'd like to remain on that board also.
Okay. Councilmember Young, would you like to be the other member?
I'm currently a member, um, but I'm happy to be...
Would you like to be the council member?
A city council representative, yeah.
Alright, thank you for, thank you for stepping up. Alright, one member to this, um, let's see, uh, this would be a 27J Capital Facilities Fee Foundation. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I'll volunteer for this, I am the treasurer, we don't really do anything but agree to send money to schools that developers provide.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, Sand Creek Regional Green Board, Board of Directors, uh, one member, monthly, third Thursday in the noon, noon hour, Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember Teeter?
I'd like to remain on that board also.
Anyone else? Okay, alright, Commerce, let's see, Commerce City School District, 27J Use Tax Committee, two members, it's meets as needed. Councilmember Sandoval?
Mayor, I would like to be on the Commerce City School Board, uh, School District, 27, Use Tax Committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Dukes? This is meets as needed. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Alright, on to forty-three, Water Commission, it, uh, has myself as the mayor on this, and plus another member. Councilmember Dukes, this meets Tuesday at 4:00 p.m.
Yeah, I'd like to be, or, and it's as needed, right, it's not...
Three times a year.
Three times a year, yeah.
It's time to do four.
Um, the other member here.
And there's a meeting tomorrow at four. You okay for that?
So, I can't make it tomorrow at four, but moving forward, I'll be able to make it.
Okay. I think the next one won't be until first quarter, um, since you won't be able to make it tomorrow, Mayor Pro Tem, can you be there tomorrow, four o'clock?
Uh, I can, yes, ma'am, I could do three, I could do three if you, I mean, four, if you need me to fill in.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes, you okay with that?
With Mayor Pro Tem subbing in tomorrow at four?
Yep.
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Alright, Northeast Transportation Connection, two members, third Wednesday at 3:30. All right, Northeast Transportation Connection, two members, third Wednesday at 3:30. I'll volunteer for this. Need another member? And these meetings are virtual. Councilmember Young?
I have a conflict at that time.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, we'll leave that open. Okay, Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge, two members, monthly, third, third Thursday at 3:00 PM. Councilmember Teeter?
I'd like to remain on that board.
Okay. All right, this is one member. Councilmember Sandoval? Councilmember Young? Conflict? Okay, we'll leave that one open as well. All right, Fire Commission, this is to be determined, two members, is needed. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I'll volunteer for the Fire Commission.
Okay. Councilmember Teeter?
I'll volunteer for it, too.
All right. Okay. Next one is the Regional Air Quality Council. This one here, you have to submit an application, you'll be, if you're selected, be appointed by the governor. It's the first Friday at 9:30. I will put my name in the ring for this one. Any other takers? All right. South Adams Water Sanitation Water Quality Advisory Board, this is second Wednesday at 6:00. One member and one alternate, councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to be a regular member on this one.
Okay. Okay, councilmember Teeter?
I'd like to be an alternate.
Councilmember Kim? Take your withdrawal? Rocky Mountain Partnership Cradle to Career. It says in a... All right. Number 50, AdCog Dinner, that's everybody. Area Boards Quarterly, everyone on council. Memorial Day Parade Advisory Committee, this is monthly from January to May. Councilmember Kim?
I'd like to be reappointed to that one, please.
Okay, throw myself in there as one of those. Councilmember Teeter?
Oh, did you already volunteer?
I volunteered, but if...
That's good.
Did you want it? Did you want it?
No, you can have it.
Okay. All right, is that, is that it?
There are a couple outstanding, Mayor, if you want to go back. There is the Zoning Board of Adjustment, the first one, that is blank currently.
See, that's a second Tuesday at 5:30. Oh. I'll sign. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
No, if you want to do it, you could do it.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
You can do it, Mayor, if you want to do it.
Okay, I'll sign up for it.
All right.
Okay, let's see. Where else do we have?
We also need Mayor, the Police Pension Board, that's the second Tuesday of the third month of the quarter, at 3:00 to 4:30 PM. It is not, as I'm seeing on your list, it is being added as we speak.
What day is that on?
That is the second Tuesday of the, of the third month of the quarter.
What time is that? Is that noon?
3:00 to 4:30.
3:00 to 4:30? Any, any councilmembers? Councilmember Teeter?
I guess I'll volunteer for that.
All right. Northeast Transportation Connection, I'm the only one on that, that's two members. Third Wednesday at 3:30. Virtual. Which one's that? It's the Northeast Transportation Connection. It's number 44. No. Okay, we'll just leave that open. Okay, and then there's 54, 55, 56, and 57, Congressional City Conference, it's all, all members, CML Annual Conference, all members, Congress of Cities in Position, that's all councilmembers as well.
Mayor, there is one more item. I believe we are missing an alternate for the Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge.
What number is that?
45. I have Teeter as the regular.
Okay, it's two members. Yeah, I just... It's the third Thursday at 3:00 PM. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I can do it, but I have to leave. Rocky, oh, councilmember Teeter and I have been doing that one.
Okay, all right, councilmember Teeter? Councilmember Teeter and Mayor Pro Tem Noble, okay? And councilmember Kim, I was going to ask you, do you mind if I serve as an alternate on the Dr. Cog Board with councilmember Dukes, so I could talk to him about what's going on and...
Is that something you guys have been able to do offhand? Because honestly, I think as far as joining Dr. Cog as an alternate would be a great idea to go in, for, for me to be jumping on to essentially, to talk about the local issues that we have.
That's fine.
I'd love to, you know, absolutely, absolutely would love to still get with you to understand as far as what you've got.
Sure, I can onboard with councilmember Dukes. Is that okay, councilmember Dukes?
Sorry, just for clarification, councilmember Kim will still be the alternate, but you now will just connect to get updates as we, is that, I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's see. Okay. Sorry about that. I will not ask the clerk, I'm sorry, I will not ask the city clerk to repeat all, all appointments. And I will ask, if our motion is second, to appoint city councilmembers to the boards and commission and the committees as stated.
Zoning, zoning board of adjustment, we have councilmember, oh, sorry, Mayor Douglas. Judiciary Review Board, councilmember Guardiola. Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission, we have councilmember Trujillo and councilmember Kim. Environmental Policy and Innovation Commission, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble and Mayor Douglas. Parks Recreation and Golf Commission, we have councilmember Dukes and councilmember Teeter. Senior Commission, we have councilmember Young and Mayor Pro Tem Noble. Veterans Commission, we have councilmember Kim and councilmember Teeter. Youth Commission, we have councilmember Sandoval and councilmember Guardiola. Commerce City Cultural Council, we have councilmember Young and councilmember Guardiola. Housing Authority, we have councilmember Trujillo and councilmember Young. Retreat Planning Committee, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble, councilmember Dukes, and councilmember Young. Council Orientation Committee, we have Mayor Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem Noble, and councilmember Dukes. City Manager, City Attorney, and Municipal Court Judge Evaluation Committee, we have councilmember Guardiola, councilmember Teeter, and councilmember Kim. Foreign Commission Committee, we have councilmember Kim, councilmember Sandoval, and councilmember Guardiola. Legislative Committee, it's going to be all councilmembers. Policy and Governance Committee, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble, councilmember Young, and councilmember Trujillo. Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, we have councilmember Sandoval, and council, Mayor Pro Tem Noble, and councilmember Dukes. Adams County Executive Committee Breakfast, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble. Adams 14, we have, Adams 14 Foundation, we have councilmember Guardiola. Airport Coordinating Committee, we have Mayor Douglas and councilmember Trujillo. CML Policy Committee, we have councilmember Dukes and councilmember Kim. Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, we have councilmember Teeter and councilmember Sandoval. Denver Regional Council of Governance Board of Directors, we have councilmember Dukes and councilmember Kim. Dr. Cog Special Board of Directors, we have councilmember Dukes and councilmember Kim. E-470 Highway Authority, we have councilmember, oh, sorry, Mayor Douglas and councilmember Teeter. Metro Mayors Caucus, we have Mayor Douglas. Ford National Organization to Ensure a Sound Controlled Environment, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble and councilmember Teeter. Northern Area Transportation Alliance, we have Mayor Douglas and councilmember Teeter. Rotary Club International Commerce City Chapter, we have councilmember Teeter and councilmember Young. SD 27J Capital Facility Fee Foundation, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble. Sand Creek Regional Greenway Board of Directors, we have councilmember Teeter. Commerce City School District, 27J Use Tax Committee, we have councilmember Sandoval and Mayor Pro Tem Noble. For Water Commission, we have Mayor Douglas and councilmember Dukes. Northeast Transportation Connection, we have Mayor Douglas. Friends of Front Range Wildlife Refuge, we have councilmember Teeter and Mayor Pro Tem Noble. Fire Commission, we have Mayor Pro Tem Noble and councilmember Teeter. South Adams County Water and Sanitation District Water Quality Advisory Board, we have councilmember Dukes and councilmember Teeter. Rocky Mountain Partnership Cradle to Career, to be determined. AdCog Dinner, we have all councilmembers. Memorial Day Parade Advisory Committee, we have councilmember Kim and Mayor Douglas. Police Pension Board, we have councilmember Teeter and Mayor Douglas.
Oh, no, the police pension. Okay. We gotta sign up for that. All right. Well, now I ask for a motion to second to appoint city councilmembers to boards and commission and committees as stated. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Sub move.
Councilmember Kim?
Second.
Okay, we'll ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Mayor Douglas?
Passed unanimously. The time now is 8:45. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Mayor, really quick, for the new councilmembers, I have in front of you a white binder. It is your land use criteria. Please feel free to take that home. There will be a separate binder that will be before you each regular meeting when there is a land use case, but that is provided for you to bring home. Take notes on it, keep it, it's yours. We will be going over that on Monday during our training. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.